Please, you're talking then. A lot more trucks. I can't do the math right now, but a lot more. So. Have you looked at how you would bring tractor trailers in and out of town?
Yes, I have. I've looked at on the maps and I actually drove down. I was down in Newville. Yesterday for about two hours, kind of scoping it out. And. I think the best way for us to do it, and we have a lot of control over how. The carriers for our customers get here, because we have a brokerage deal with the carrier company. So we can basically tell them, hey, tell your guys to bring it in. This way and they'll do that. So I think the easiest way for us to do it. Would be to have them get off at the Shippensburg exit. And then go down into Shippensburg, get on the Riddner Highway. And go on five thirty-three and then take five thirty-three into Newville. Turn on Broad Street and then the main docking area for the bill, the business is. The Pennsylvania Avenue Street. So that would keep them out of downtown Newville because I know what you guys did. I mean, downtown Newville's not. Eighteen wheeler friendly at all, but I think that route I we would keep them out of downtown. And that would have the least amount of problems.
Yeah, I just don't know how the residents of Broad Street would feel about that. Yeah, it's it's just something that would have to be looked at. Any anybody else have questions that they want explored right now?
What be your hours of operation, do you think?
About eight AM to six PM would be our official hours.
About your unofficial hours?
It depends on how much work we have to do that day. Sometimes we're in here a little bit later than that, but there wouldn't be any trucks or anything.
Guys, this is Kirk Stoner. I'm with Cumberland County Planning Department. And a bubbler for the record, so. I have the purple and going on tonight too, so baseball practice. So yeah, bubblers. That's right. So hey, have you guys looked at the zoning on the site and do you believe the zoning is appropriate as it's done now for the business you want to do?
Oh, it's zoned industrial, so I would assume yes. But I think that's kind of why we're here to make sure that that industrial. Owning means what I think it means.
How would you classify your business? Would it be a distribution center? Would it be a warehouse? Would it?
I I classify it as more of a tech business. So the niche we fill in what we do. Is customization. So you think of, I don't know, like a different type of distribution center. They focus more heavily on freight. We are basically, we can offer our customers like. Higher quality care and that we can do handwritten notes and put it in their packages. We have product designers that can develop customized corrugated boxes and put cool logos on them. We're we're sitting in our apparel section right now where we have several direct to garment printers and people can submit files to us. And we can print really high quality custom clothing. So it's not, you know, it's not a traditional fulfillment company, shipping company in that sense where. We are trying to offer higher quality services to a more, a more niche customer, I guess you could say. Does that kind of do a good job?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you had to say a phrase, you could say fulfillment center. Okay, not really a distribution center or a giant warehouse, but more of a fulfillment center for econ.
Are you making your own products or?
No.
No, okay, so you're. Can you tell us who your clients or customers are? Not necessarily the kind?
No, no, that's fine. So I was telling Lucy before you guys got on the call, some of our most notable customers. We have a couple of customers from Shark Tank. If you guys have ever heard of Dude robe. Or Swoveralls, those are two of our apparel companies from Shark Tank and then. We actually ship for the White House Gift Shop too, which was one of our big customers that we locked up. The White House Gift Shop used to be. Basically, part of the Secret Service Pension Fund where all proceeds would go to the pension for the Secret Service and then we ended up. Bidding for the contract and we got them and that's one of the ways our business started to start to jump and. It, you know, it was really cool because like Trent told you, our other owner Brady is a veteran and we consider ourselves to be. A patriotic company. So getting to ship for the White House Gift Shop was is really cool for us. Do we have any other people that are that are?
Not any like huge names as big as the White House Gift Shop, but basically people just send us their products. We store it and then our software talks to their online stores. And when an order comes in, it comes in through their online store, comes into our warehouse management system. And then tells our packers to go out and pick their stuff off the shelf. And then it goes into the bins, the small parcel bins that then get taken on to the UPS, FedEx, DHL. Box trucks that come daily.
But you also make things if if you have the T-shirts there. And your client sends you the design, you can put it on that you put it on the T-shirt. So that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think your business is diverse and kind of fascinating.
Oh, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. I am concerned about the and I and I think it will take off. I just don't know what it my only my only concern. I mean, so far it sounds so it sounds good. Is the. Is the increase in traffic on Broad Street.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to come talk to you all because we, you know, we want to work with you guys and do what's best. You know, for everybody. I I think that's why I wanted to get across the point that we are local because. You know, we we have good hearts and we really do care about the community, you know, even if you guys are Bulldogs, we still love you guys too. But I I think that's one, one of the benefits with hopefully getting us in there instead of. You know, a bigger corporation that has no ties to the area, you know, we want to build this thing out. With our family, friends, loved ones, local people in the area that want to join, you know, Team Chip Daddy and stuff like that. So. You know, any suggestions that you guys would have for us? We'd love to, you know, follow your lead and do everything we could to make this work for everybody involved.
And I I'm gonna tell you, I would not. Be upset if. If. If your company would bring hundreds of jobs into the Newville area.
And and I think, sorry to cut you off, and I think it's also important to note that. These, you know, these aren't minimum wage level jobs either, like, you know, we pay our employees. Really well, you know, we expect a lot out of everybody, but everybody is, you know, compensated very well. Full benefits, great work environment, and you get to work with people that really care about you and the community. So I just wanted to add that into.
Now, do you hire people who are not from Boiling Springs?
No.
Yeah.
You're out.
Only the smart ones is from Boiling Spring.
That's right.
So if you have a couple of hundred employees. We're gonna park them.
So that's that's a great question because I think we counted the parking spots there and there's enough room for.
There's like.
Maybe maybe forty.
Yes. So yes, that's that's a big problem that as we grow, we're really gonna have to tackle, whether it's. I mean. Buying their properties pop up for sale around it doing that. I mean, I really don't know what we would do in that situation. That's something we really have to think about. And work with you guys on because you guys are the ones that ultimately will approve or deny that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if if you're, would you be thinking about adding blacktop space?
I mean, I think that would be ideal.
Right, and I think that'd be something we'd want to work with you guys on. But yeah, I mean, we, I don't know, we haven't really thought ahead to a hundred employees yet. But yeah, I mean.
That's something we definitely need to think about. We'll include that in our in our.
Um, because if you're. I do believe we're gonna be in, I don't think the pandemic will be under control probably till next summer. Of course, you know, it 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 could be, but so if your business continues to grow. That's something you'll really have to take into consideration. Like you could, if you found a parking lot outside of town and shuttled your people in, that's just an idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not many employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's absolutely something we would consider for sure. And I mean, I'm sure there's ways we could get creative too, like it's a big space. Maybe we could open up side doors and pull people, you know, right in or something like that. I'm sure there's lots of things that we could we could do. Oh, and I guess I should add this last point as well. So. There is potential to have a decent amount of our workforce to be virtual as well. You know, you think of departments like marketing and sales, you don't necessarily need to be physically onsite, although obviously everybody is onsite right now. Just because it makes more sense.
That's yeah, that's the ones. We definitely need to think more about parking. That's something that's something we honestly hadn't really talked about today. So that's something that we, I'm glad you guys brought it up.
Yeah.
Right, because if you, you know, if you add impermeable, if you add blacktop, then you gotta have a stormwater plan. Because we have stormwater problems here.
Anything else anyone has to ask these young fellows? So how, what's Brady's last name?
Farrell, F A R R E L L.
And how is he? Is he your generation? Is he just like?
Yeah, we're all twenty-eight years old. We graduated in two thousand and ten from Boiling Springs.
Good for you.
Nice town.
Nice town. Not the people aren't that nice, but it's a nice town.
You got a great Mexican restaurant there.
Oh, yeah, right on the lake.
Yeah, it's up there every week.
All right, anybody else? Jack, go ahead.
No, I was just saying I don't have anything else. I guess what we need is a. A pretty comprehensive plan and set of questions answered. Is that something? Matt, that you're working on or is that something that Shannon's responsible for? I'm not sure who does, who's the. Person that's responsible for making sure we get the.
Typically, that would be, you know, me that would would work with them on that. I just got introduced to this about the same time as Lucy did last week. I spoke with Mike Adler and let him know to have these guys come in for an introduction. And they also reached out against Lucy and Mike reached out that way. But that's where we're at at this point.
Okay, so you'll be managing that process, Shannon?
Should, yep.
Okay.
Do you guys have an engineer that you're working with that would potentially guide you through the land development process if you if you chose to buy the site and move forward?
Not at the time, no, we don't.
But just just a recommendation, you know, as you're looking at this and looking at the site, it may be helpful to have a consulting engineer to look at it because some of the issues with. Parking, stormwater management, some of those issues could be make or break for your business, you know, because especially in the stormwater management side. If you have to to look at the site, the site's nearly one hundred percent impervious now. If you have to make provisions for, you know, stormwater infrastructure, best management practices could drive your cost up. It could also eliminate certain parts of your your site for parking as well. So it might be good to get a light consultation from somebody to take a look at the site. You know, look at the design of the building, what you'd need. I think it might give you a little more insight on on if it's feasible on that site, what you want to do and maybe save you some time and money later on. Of moving ahead before you know some of those questions, no answers to some of those questions.
I think that's really great advice. Thank you for that.
Shannon, I see you, you had your mic on and you turned it off. Do you have anything for these gentlemen?
Oh, just what we just said. I mean. We, I've talked with Mike a little bit about it. I haven't actually met these two yet. It's good to meet you. You know, I believe Mike has all my information and I would like to get together and meet with them, but it's not something we're gonna do on, you know, on the Zoom call. We can sit down, go through the site plan and and what you want to do. And that would be my first suggestion is what Kirk just said is that you're gonna want to bring on a designer at least for some late consultation. Because we're gonna have to look at the the traffic coming in and out, the neighborhood impact we're gonna have there. But I believe that what you want to do is a great idea and, you know, the we hope that it all fits.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Trent, Trent and I, you know, we haven't done the commercial real estate thing before. So we don't claim to be experts on it, but we've learned a lot from Mike. We've really been following, you know, his lead on. You know, that's how that's how we found this spot and how we really, really, you know, fell in love with it and thought that we could do something special with it. So we've been following his lead. But, you know, we're all ears, so we really appreciate the advice from everybody.
As we get into the parking situation, there are some other ideas I have for you, but we'll talk.
Cool, yeah, awesome.
We'll be in touch with you definitely, Shannon, very soon.
So would the plan be to consider their site plan and their application at the next meeting in October?
Joe and Trent, do you think it would be ready in a month?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You know, we could be, so if that is the next meeting, we could be ready even before that if need be, but obviously, you know, we still need to meet with Shannon. But our plan is getting there.
Well, then I'm not sure if we have it written into our minutes. But we would want to see your plans. At least.
Ten days.
Ten days ahead of time. And I think we'd want Shannon, of course, he'll be working with you and you're gonna get a site engineer. Is that what you say, Kirk? Is that the right wording? And we might want to get. An engineer also to work to with Shannon to look at it because it's it's a big deal. I forget how many acres it is under roof.
Yeah, it's a hundred.
It's a hundred forty thousand square feet.
Yeah, so forty-three into that is like it's four or five acres under roof. It's all.
Yeah, it's huge.
So we don't want to. It's it's important to do to and as Kirk said, for you guys, so that you don't waste your time and money. To see what what is feasible and what may or may not need to be done to the building. I mean, it's been sitting empty for. Two and a half years, I think. So, but as I said, I think your business sounds exciting. I would love to see it it be there. But that is not my decision, although I will be voting on it. Anyway, you guys, I thank you. If, does anybody else have anything?
Lucy, can I ask a real quick question?
Ah, yes, Scott, go for it.
You know, a community, Newville's a pretty community-based community. You know, a lot of our businesses in town, you know, support a lot of community projects and. Support the school district, which is kind of funny, but. You know, what are some things that you would do to, you know, contribute to our sense of community here in Newville?
Man, we have a lot of ideas. We didn't want to overwhelm you guys, but one of them being we want to bring. We want to bring wrestling back to Big Spring and make you guys great again. So Trent and I both have been wrestling partners.
Go ahead, just mute him now. Oh, sorry.
Um, so it's funny, we, before we started to fill this whole space up, we had a full wrestling mat in here and we. We have a bunch of wrestlers on staff and we scrap like almost every day after work. And I could see Trent and I, you know, potentially getting in and helping out with coaching and stuff like that, you know, Trent. I have been coaching wrestling for a long, long time now and we really, really love helping out. And I used to coach at Boiling Springs for a little bit. And that's just one way, but you know, I would love to really, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would definitely be into sponsoring a lot of things, any kind of community outreach we could do. And internships through the school or work studies, whatever, whatever. Any, we would definitely sponsor or co-sponsor with the other businesses, any other kind of events, community events, like we're.
Apparel too, you know, custom apparel, you know, we could be the go-to guys for, you know. If the school needs some stuff done, you know, we'd be, we'd love to donate some uniforms to, you know, the school district and stuff like that. Like, I think that's one way we could really contribute to.
Really anything. We're not opposed to any, anything. We're, we're a community-based company, so I mean, we want to be in the, as ingrained in the community as we possibly can.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna, you know, I know if we can get that, we're gonna clean that place up too and make it look beautiful. I really fell in love with the place whenever it opens up in the back by the rail trail. And I just was looking at it and it just made me so sad, you know, seeing the potential in a building like that and seeing how underutilized it was. You know, I didn't realize it was so hustling and bustling back there. There was so many, there's probably twenty people that passed us walking on the rail trail just in the time that we were there. And it just got me so excited because that's such an underutilized and beautiful space in the back.
Are you planning on using the whole space for the business? I mean, that's. Subletting any of it or using it for other purposes?
So our point, our plan to start was we were gonna focus on the part of the building all the way to the right. It's forty thousand square feet.
It's the very west end. It's the newest part of it. I think that would be initially large enough for us to operate out of while we look for. Money, grant money, whatever we can get to and develop plans to make the rest of the building.
And and I.
Usable, basically. And if if we got it all usable and didn't need the space for our business, we would definitely be interested in subletting. To other, really anything that we could really do. But yes, that's that's something that we have talked about.
And the building set up really nicely. That it seems it would be easy to sublet it because if you did, if you did want to close it off, the rooms are.
Like naturally divided.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we, or some of the things we've talked about for that space are. You know, maybe getting a brewery in there, microbrewery or.
We said the same thing, like something I think could be so cool would be to really open up the back facing the rail trail and do some type of like. Microbrewery, like little cafe in there where you could stop in right off the trail, get something to eat, get a drink, freshen back up and go back on your way.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that's something we thought about too, so that might be something we can talk more about.
Awesome, that'd be great.
All right, anyone else? Okay, well, Joe and Trent, it's, I'll speak for everyone. It was very nice to meet you. I look forward to, I hope you took notes and I look forward to hearing from you.
Awesome. Yeah, it was so nice meeting everybody too. So just to recap, so we'll link up with Shannon. And get our plan together. We'll send it over.
Ten, ten days, at least ten days before we'll have it all ready to go and then we'll plan on being ready to give you the whole, whole spiel at the October. Meeting. All right.
Awesome.
Thank you guys very much. It was very nice talking to you.
Yeah, thanks again, everyone. It's nice meeting you.
Say you can listen to the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, work to do.
We gotta get our plan together.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, take care now.
I I texted Michael. And he is hoping to. Join the meeting shortly. So let's, Kathy, I'm sorry to keep you waiting, but we need a quorum if we're to. Deal with thirty-five East Main. So Troy, do you have? Anything? Where'd Troy go?
I have.
Oh, there you are. My screen's moved around. Do you want to give us a a brief update? I know we have not had a meeting. We've canceled it because of attendance issues. I was one of those.
Yeah, so sure, Lucy. So in terms of the update, I've putting the finishing touches on. Article four, which is the supplemental regulations for the zoning ordinance. And one thing I was just needed to work through was some of the parking. Regulations, which will be included in that section, park, off-street parking and loading. But the other thing I was able to do in that section was hopefully be able to capture, going back to the zoning amendment. Kind of document that Fred gave is to make sure I've captured anything that might have been. Supplemental regulation. I also was scanning through the previous draft zoning ordinance. So that's kind of my typical MO is to put together the. Section and then go back through those other documents, the amendment documents, what you had worked on previously to get some thoughts and ideas from there and then. Start to hopefully build it out. So I have this. I should have it ready. This, I had everything ready except the parking, but I've been able to work through the parking. This week since last week, we postponed our meeting till tomorrow. So I'll be able to push that. My goal was to push that out in the morning to everybody, but what that'll be will be basically everything up until article four. And then really the only ma- big section to work through is signs. And then just populate the definitions. So we should, we're, we're getting very close. To being, having a full draft. Then obviously, you know, we, our last meeting that we had, you know, the the task. Advisory group, the task force had been going through. Hopefully been going through the the use section. So I know Kirk had done a thorough review of that and think he was supportive of it. And I know Kirk, I think you gave some comments on it the last meeting. So there's a couple of those items. I went back and checked with Fred. So I think we've got, I've got Fred's comments incorporated in or addressed on a couple of those items. So I think I've done my homework there too, a following up. So, so yeah, I think it's getting close. Eventually we'll have to get Shannon. To start to take a look at it because this is gonna be his baby, I think, right, Shannon?
Where is she? In there?
There is. I have to find the mute button. Yeah, so we need to obviously take a good look at it and haven't had a chance to see what you guys have done yet. I know you've been doing a task force with Fred and that's really what I've been told.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I think.
If you have an option to get it to me, I'd love to be able to get through it.
Yeah, I think once we can get through this next section, then hand it over to you. So I think what we've been able to do, Shannon, is. Take a real streamlined approach. So there's actually only six articles. I think your current ordinance has maybe fifteen articles or something of that magnitude and. One of the real and kind of streamlined improvements is taking all what I call the administrative provisions. In the ordinance and putting them into one section. So that's kind of the general zoning provisions right up front. And then the way we've also done this too is to streamline the zoning districts. So we actually have minimized your zoning districts down to three zoning districts. One is to retain the R one residential where Jack lives. We've expanded the the village district a little bit beyond to almost match up with the historic district. That's the official historic district. And then where you had some of the industrial. And some of the commercial, like the residential areas, north of the borough and west of the borough. Even where the ribbon mill is, we collectively with the task force agreed that that was more of a mixed use. Especially because you can through conditional use, you allow those commercial uses. To basically be copacetic, you know, exist, coexist with residential users right next door and it's worked out. I guess, great. I mean, I've, we we did a nice walking tour and through the discussions, I don't think that we saw any issues of doing that. So I think that we've streamlined that. Plus then too, we have a whole new section called zoning uses. That has a whole section that defines every single use permitted. Plus it gives.
That'll be really nice.
So it's a standardized list of of uses and then what actually helps supplement that is a table of. Tip, what we call typical uses for the various use categories. So it gives a defined sort of a real narrowly, like a, you don't have a list that goes on for pages. I'll put it that way, Shannon. You have a list of of standard list of uses that are defined. There's actually supplemental regulations built right into that section. So you don't have to leaf back throughout the document. And then if you for whatever, if you don't have a specific use defined or listed, there's a table of typical uses. Based upon that, that major category, that main category. And it gives you a laundry list of uses. So for example, the two gentlemen that were just here tonight for the ribbon mill. They fit under the industrial use and there's a bit, a use there called mail order processing distribution. That's exactly what they are. So I went, as we were talking, I went and said, yep, there they are. And we, then there's a table. Too, that actually lists those out and you can quickly identify if it's permitted by right. Special exception by district by use. So I think so far it's worked out really well in terms of a streamlined. User-friendly type of zoning ordinance.
That sounds great.
For you, Shannon. So, so we're getting close. You know, again, like I said, tomorrow is our meeting that we had to reschedule from last week. And that's totally okay. But hopefully if I can plow through this, I just gotta. Probably, you know, Kirk, I'll probably need your inputs on that too, to kind of think through some of the parking. Kind of requirements, you know, that's always kind of a guessing game, a little bit of a science and an art. To it as well. So. So I'll lean on Kirk as, as I always do to give me some good advice and guidance there as his. Bubbler knowledge comes through, right?
Yeah, I tell you, Troy, they're really lucky to have two bubblers on this, you know?
Well, I, I have boys that go to bubblers that, man, I, I can't, I can't tell you where I'm from, so you guys would kick me out of the room. But no, that, that was, that's good though, but I'm just disappointed those guys didn't find something in South Middleton here, Kirk.
And we can always call them back after the meeting.
Help you with that. Help you with that.
If uh, if, if, if parking in stormwater puts the kibosh to their plans, we'll, we'll, we'll find a place for them, right? Yeah, that's, all joking aside, that's a fantastic uh, use opportunity. And they're thinking kind of of the other uses that that building could support with the trail in mind. That's great. I think that's really exciting.
Well, we'll see what their plan looks like.
Yep, exactly. Start, uh, start from there. So I don't know if anybody has questions for me, but that's uh, really the overview and update for, for you folks.
And I just, Scott, are you still there? Uh, Michael's going to be trying to log in here in a heartbeat. Okay, sorry Troy, I'm hoping Scott heard me. But he's muted, which is good.
So I don't know Lucy, if anybody, you or anybody else has questions?
Um, no, um, we'll, I, I guess we'll see you tomorrow, five thirty.
Right, exactly, exactly. Yeah, one thing I was able to work through, um, yeah, I think we did address that last time was um, the historic uh, district provisions. I know back in July at the planning commission, we spent a lot of time talking about that. Then Kirk, Matthew and myself got uh, uh, collaborated and uh, and and coordinated with PHMC even. So I think based upon our last meeting that we had, I think everybody was pretty satisfied with how we were addressing uh, demolition, uh, redevelopment, infill development for new, new structures, um, uh, et cetera, both in the historic district and overall. So um, I think that's pretty solid now.
Um, I do have one, if these guys do indeed buy the ribbon mill, they will be in, under the current zoning ordinance.
It all depends on when they can, you know, I, if they submit a land development plan, they would have uh, entitlement rights under that ordinance. So I think that's right, Matthew, right?
Yeah, I mean, at some point there will be a pending ordinance issue, but if they're in by October, I think they would fall under the old one.
Yeah, I think usually if they get a land development plan submitted, then they haven't, they're entitled under the, the, the current provisions.
Yeah, I don't know what your timing is. I, I think they're a little ways off. I, I think what they'll bring back to you next month is a sketch plan. If they would come back with a fully engineered land development plan, I think I'd be surprised. But just based upon talking to them tonight and seeing whether, I, I don't think they're really that close to a fully engineered plan, which takes some time and also takes money.
And that, that's kind of what I'm at with it. Like I said, these guys, um, they just reached out last week is when I heard from their realtor that they were looking at the property. Um, and it was last, I think Monday that they, they had told us that they were looking at purchasing it. Without them even having a designer and engineer yet, I don't know how they get formal, you know, signed sealed documents ready to go and in here with ten days ahead of time for everybody to review. It's going to be quite difficult. I would think that they, there's a good chance they'll have a sketch plan and they'll be on the following month, but um, that's still going to be pushing it.
But they're, they are going to need a good solid plan before we review it. And so we're going to be looking at you to make sure that they do that. So this isn't going to get whistled through.
No, and, and that's, you know, I didn't want to tell them that while they're sitting there, but at the same time, it's you know, when they, when they called us, they just, I literally still, you know, I had talked to Mike the following uh, evening and told him to get them, you know, in here for an introduction and to get him in contact with me. And I still have no contact with him. I know Mike and that's it. Um, and I know they reached out to Lucy and uh, and, and got on the agenda, but that's all I could tell you at this point.
Shannon, I, I called them. I called Mike Adler to find
Oh, you called them. Okay, I'm sorry. I knew that you, they had gotten to you, which I was happy about because I knew they got on the agenda. But um, I, you know, that was, I haven't heard from them since last Monday, so.
Well, yeah, that, and that's, it's only, it's only been like a week or ten days. Like I, that first came up, so.
I just, I, you know, I would have expected at this point for them to, I told them, I said, you're going to want to start to get a site plan together and stuff and we need to sit down and meet. And they haven't yet. Yeah, that's what I told Mike. And I don't know if Mike told them that or not. So uh, it was good that we told them tonight, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so your memo to Fred about this. And I think that's what you're talking about is exactly what we need.
Yeah.
Uh, they got a lot of hoops they got to jump through and um, we need to be pretty certain before we make a decision about this.
Yeah, and that's where, if they come back next month, I, I, again, I think it's going to be more of uh, this is the way we're going. It's not going to be a I don't think it's going to be a formal plan. If they are, I'll be surprised and I'll be happy for them if they, if they have that kind of mojo to keep moving it that fast and, and get an engineer to move that fast with them, so.
Well, there, I, you know, I, I, once again, I would say I did like them. Um, and at twenty-eight years of age, having this type of business and have everything fall into place, I'm, I'm happy for them.
At twenty-eight years old, they do have the energy. They may get there, who knows? Don't have that energy anymore.
So I uh, Michael is trying to get in. I asked him to text Scott. Um, because I don't know that Scott is, I, you know, monitoring the meeting anymore. So I want to talk about Kathy's uh, about seventy-five East Main. So I would like to have um, Michael, there's Michael Sharp, Jack and I, then we have a form. Uh, I think everyone, all four of us should uh, hear everything about. There he is. Bam. Good, alright. So, um, we're now going to uh, number two on new business. Um, I do see that we uh, we could not approve the minutes from the last meeting because they're still on Bobby's computer and she's working nine to nine today. Just FYI. For me, when I do the minutes for this one. Um, so the zoning application of Kathy Lloyd for a home conversion at seventy-five East Main Street. In your, in your uh, packet that Fred gave us, ours sent us, it uh, is, well Shannon, where are you, Shannon? My, my uh, my screen changes.
I'm here.
Do you want to talk about this, since you know if it's okay to do this?
Well, I'll tell you what, where I'm at and what I've known so far, okay, is that uh, Kathy had reached out asking if it was potential for seventy-five East Main Street to be converted from a single family to a two-family dwelling. And I called uh, her back to talk and talked with uh, oh Kathy's father. Why can't, I'm sorry. And uh, you know, as I talked to him, you know, it came up and I said, it looks like, you know, the potential is there. Um, obviously we'll need, you know, to go through what you're going to do, but I can tell you right now, and that's what I told him then, was that the rear parking, it's only a thirty-foot wide um, lot. And the parking is required to be four spaces for a two-family. Um, so that the garage back there would either, would, something would need to be done with the parking because right now to make four spaces with the garage, it's existing is not possible. That's where it was at. I hadn't received an application until um, um, I think it was Friday, they mailed one in. Um, and I sent it back uh, because it needs some more details to it. And Kathy was working on uh, the details for the plan. Um, and that's where it was left at. Uh, other than um, I know they went to, they had tried to go, or I guess on the council. Um, in, I, I'm just still waiting to see where we're at from there. I haven't received anything else.
So the zoning land use permit application we got in our packet is not complete?
The one that I had was not. I don't know what you got in your packet.
Kathy, are you there? Did you update one for Shannon?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes, I, I, we are drawing up the plans for like the, the, the entire lot. Uh, the upstairs and the downstairs, we have the plans by the size, you know, for all the rooms and all that kind of stuff. Where the concern was for like the two-car garage, there's a carport on there that we were thinking to take the carport off and the, they can pull in there and then come up into the bottom of the yard and we can have a parking, like two spaces like directly behind the garage.
So would that constitute four spaces?
Said something to Dad when you met with him, something about there had to be so much green space?
Well, I, 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 I said, ask him, because I live in the village district. And I think that is R-two, R-one or R-two. I don't have my map in front of me.
It's R-two.
R-two.
So I spoke with uh, Matt and he was going to research that. Is there an issue with green space in R-two?
There could be an issue with the green space. I was looking at it more from the issue of, of parking and I, I think there's got to be uh, two exits per unit. So I don't know if that, that's something that Kathy's thought about or not. But I think all of that stuff should be Oh Shannon, what's that? It's uh, in the supplement section.
What are you asking about?
The uh, multifamily.
Um, the two-family needs to, you know, if we're going into um, you know, the, the lot uses or the lot coverage, they need to have a lot, you know, maximum lot coverage is forty percent. And I believe when we looked at that, that they're, they're going to have plenty of open space and, and, and that. Um, and that was part of the plan I'm waiting on from Kathy, that was the ingress, negress out of the house. Um, make sure that they have that. But that's uh, she's working on that part. I think the major concern again that I drew to her before we even got to the point where uh, of getting an application was that I did not see how they would have the four parking spaces unless they do, like she said, where they demo a uh, the carport in, to, to create the second two spaces.
Well, no, two, when I went over with uh, and walked to the, the property with Ken, the two parking, and it's on the back of our garage. It's in, on the back in our packet, you've got this sketch. Um, and back here's the alley, Cove Alley, um, the uh, oh waters, wait, this is Cove Avenue, water sewer plants over here. And this is the garage, the carport. And to take the carport down and drive down and have this area, oh, I'm sorry, this area down here for parking. This is also, right here is Becky Barrick's property and she put up a lovely stone wall. So it's uh, if that helps orient anyone who hasn't gone down and looked at it.
Would this plan have four parking spaces? I, I can't quite make out what I'm looking at.
This, oh, do you have, did you, do you have your packet? Did you get
I do, yeah. I'm looking at it. I just don't see, I don't know that it says there are four spaces here.
Here's a two-car garage. I think that, is that two spaces Shannon? If there's a two-car garage?
The two-car garage would cover two spaces. They would need to create two behind the garage.
Which is
That's what they're attempting to do by removing the uh, carport. I uh, cannot see the measurements there, but you know, I would believe they would have the space there to do so.
Yeah, there's, there's really no measurements on it, but if you think the space is there. Um, and what Kathy wants to know is, can she make that out of crushed stone or must it be blacktopperment or macadam? Do we know, are, are ordinance calls for macadam, is that correct?
Our ordinance calls for, for macadam, that being a paved lot. Um, they were asking to do crushed stone. And I just want them to realize that it, either way, it's still going to be considered impervious.
And Matt, did you uh, do any uh, research on that?
I mean, if, if, you know, it's the only caveat I always give, if we're going to give a waiver or something, we need to be prepared to give it to the next person that comes to see us. You know, if we, if we let them have crushed stone.
Why would we do that? Why would we do that?
Why would we give them the waiver?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know that we need to give them the waiver. I'm just letting you know that if you decide you want to grant the waiver, that you need to be aware that you might need to give to the next person that asks for it.
Right. Maybe, maybe the right question would have been, why do we require macadam?
We require macadam so that it creates a dust-free area to the, and less uh, trap pull out onto the uh, Cove Avenue.
What was that second part?
And so though you have, you have less stone and, and, and uh, material or debris coming, put, being pulled out.
And if uh, so would, would, would it just be this proposed parking area that would be the crushed stone?
I, I don't know. I don't, I can't see it.
Oh, you don't have this?
Yes, it would just be the proposed parking spots that would be the crushed stone.
I see.
What about the access where the carport is now? Would that be the stone as well or is that paved?
Well, right now it is concrete. And I don't, and it, you know, if, if I get the approval, that may, I, I'm not positive what will happen to that, that, the concrete. I think we can still use the concrete.
Yes, I, I would think that. So I, I was just, um, so if there's, if there's concrete there, there would be that uh, paved area between your, your stone and, and the uh, Cove Alley that would help prevent debris from being dragged, you know, carried on to the, on to the alley. That was my question. That was my concern and question.
Kathy, when I was there, I'm trying to remember it, I was little, I did take pictures, I guess I could look at them. Is there, like when you go on the carport, is there a drop-off into the yard? Does it go down a little hill or is that fairly?
There's a drop-off on the uh, Carlisle side. Yes. Into the, the neighbor's yard. There's a little, there's like a little stone wall there and there's a drop-off.
But, but there's no little hill going towards the house from
Into the yard?
Yeah.
We've driven through there, so I, I don't, I mean, there might be a little bit of a bump, but no, there's, there's not a major drop-off now.
Okay.
Um, Matt, isn't there a, there's some sort of ordinance that governs conversions of single-family to uh, rental? Can you refresh my memory on that?
Well, I think Shannon was talking about it. It's uh, the ordinance was, what date was it? Two thousand eight dash three. So if you have your zoning ordinance, that's where it is. Um, and it would be page, what? Conversion start on page five, I guess it's actually on page six. Do I have that right Shannon? I don't know if you have that with you.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't have it here with me, but I guess I'm, I'm wondering, what does it, what, what does it say?
So conversion of single-family detached to multifamily dwelling? Let's see, lot on which structure is located shall contain at least seventy-five percent of the required minimum lot area for single-family detached dwelling. Uh, each dwelling unit shall have access to a minimum of two fire exits. What else? Uh, no less than five hundred feet of habitable space. Uh, adequate sewer and water. At least I think that has to do with what we're talking about.
And does this uh, plan meet all those criteria?
Well, from what I'm looking at, I mean, I'm not entirely sure about the dimensions, but um, and I don't know about the fire exits yet. And when it comes to the parking, at least when I look on it and the uh, property mapper, it doesn't look like there's a lot of space past the carport um, toward seventy-seven East Main Street. So Kathy, are you proposing that the additional parking spaces, though, you'll get to them off of Cove Avenue through the carport? I mean, how, how are two cars going to fit around the garage?
Well, we, we actually were thinking of tearing the carport down.
Okay. Two to go. I mean, what, you know, are they going to be sort of stacked, one in front of the other? Is that the idea?
No.
No, you'll you'll pull through the carport and then back and then like turn back in towards the garage.
Okay.
It'll be like right behind the garage.
Okay.
But there's, there's going to be parking there. So how are you, if if cars are parked there, how are you going to get into the garage?
The garage doors are open towards Cove Alley.
Toward Cove Alley.
Yeah, there's two garage doors towards the alley, so there'll be two spots there. And then you, when you pull in beside the carport, then you'll you'll turn back towards the garage on the backside of the garage. There'll be the parking area.
I see. Okay, so you're you're actually entering the garage, the two car garage from Cove Avenue?
Yes.
Okay.
And then what she's looking at is the other two cars would go through where the current carport is. As they enter into the parking, into the yard, they would make a right hand turn and face seventy-seven East Main Street as they park up. Uh, you know, come parallel with the garage.
Would they face seventy or?
Or, I'm sorry, not seventy-seven, it would be seventy-three.
Thank you. Okay, good, good.
So, so at this point, we still need to wait. Till Kathy provides Shannon the completed plan so he can have, make his full comments, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, and I have, we're getting all the dimensions and all that kind of stuff to send to Shannon, yes.
Okay, so we're not being asked to make a decision tonight?
No.
Basically, what I wanted to make sure was, you know, if if it was possible and then. About the, uh, if I whether I had to worry about getting it black topped or if we could do the crushed stone. I mean, that's, you know. That's why I sent it to the council just to see, you know, just to start the ball rolling on everything.
Right. I guess we need to see the whole plan and then before we make any piecemeal decisions, wouldn't we?
Yes. I would recommend that.
So you just need like dimensions and 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 the outline where everything is going to be?
Shannon, basically, you need to finish making the adjustments for the to to that Shannon requested. And then once he reviews it, he can, he'll make a recommendation of us and we'll proceed from there.
Okay.
Karen, sharp over. I'm asking, how many bedrooms are these apartments going to have?
One. Yeah, they're just going to be a one bedroom, one bath, one kitchen.
A living room?
Yes, a living room also.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else, any questions for Kathy?
Not for me. I think we just need to see the finished, uh, I mean, just what Mike said, basically, you know, she needs to finish the application and then Shannon needs to look at it and then give us a recommendation. And then we can move from there.
And I apologize, I just, you know, Kathy, I'm still, when you give me all the dimensions, I I'll make sure we go through it and and we're able to go down. List of what else may be needed, but till I get that, I really, it's it's hard for anybody to make a a decision.
All right, well. As long as Shannon and Kathy are on the same page. Yes.
Re regarding the regarding the crushed stone versus pavement, my my thought would be. Initial thought would be prior to seeing the completed plan is that as long as there there is the concrete pavement between. The parking area and the alley. I don't see a a problem with the crushed stone as long as it is made into an impervious surface. And there are ways to do that with crushed stone. Um, as but as we, I don't think we can make an exception where it's crushed stone all the way to the alley because then. As Shannon said, we have too too great a a risk of debris being tracked into the alley and so forth.
So if it's, if it's a crushed stone, Mike. Yeah, you said there are ways to do it to make it impervious. Is that a specific? Technology or a specific procedure for doing that?
There there actually, uh, I was talking to Fred about it, um, and there are, I think, I knew of. Basically, it's it's using different base materials and then putting the crushed stone on top. To pack in and it does pretty much turn into an impervious surface. Um, and there Fred Fred, uh, is aware of actually, uh, one or two other ways of doing it than than what I knew of. So there, I guess it would depend on the contractor and what what, um, access he has to. You know, his from his suppliers as to how he would go about doing it, but there are ways that would, the stone would would essentially be impervious.
Okay, so then if we decided that it was okay to do that, have a have a crushed stone. A parking pad there, uh, it would be conditioned on it being being built so that it was in fact impervious. I mean, that's a general question. I'm not necessarily asking you. Maybe that's Shannon. Is that, is that right?
The way that we look at crushed stone right now is that it is an impervious surface as is, and that's the first thing I've wanted Kathy to be aware of because. When you do a crushed stone parking pad, or even if we permit one, it's still going to be considered that way when you're looking at your coverage of your lot. And that was one of the things I wanted her to know to take into effect. Um, as far as the borough is concerned. Um, you know, we would be treating it as as the lot is being covered with, um, you know. For stormwater management and those purposes of impervious. The bigger, you know, the other scenarios that we have to look at is is that the access drives are supposed to be. Um, built towards Penn dot specifications and the paved part is for the debris and, uh. Material coming, creating a dust free atmosphere. I believe that a parking pad, in my personal opinion, would be. Fine, but that's, you know, something for you to decide if you want to acknowledge that waiver at a at a future point for Ms. Lloyd. As long as we're okay with the concrete that's currently there. And again, that may even constitute a waiver if we're going to turn this into an access drive, not just a parking spot. You know, for the original carport that's there. So that's another thing we'll be looking at and we can discuss when we get the plans in.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy, I have a question. What if, when we get those five hundred year storms every couple of years? And it floods down in that area, does this yard flood?
It has, uh, since I have owned it, uh, once the water, there was some water in the garage.
Wow.
Uh, the, when that happened though. Uh, that was also at the time that Becky's place was. Really torn up. And I think some of the water issues were from Becky's, you know, property and now. You know, she did put that, the retaining wall up and some of that, and we haven't had issues since then.
Um, is that that storm where the mill overflowed and?
I don't remember, yeah.
Because another part of that issue was that underpass, the neighbors. Uh, not not you at seventy-five or seventy-seven, but on the other side of Cove Avenue.
Mellingers.
Yeah, they lost their whole backyard. They lost.
Yes.
They lost.
Yeah, that one, that it didn't, that the garage didn't flood that time, the the one when Mellingers flooded. And they lost the garage.
But I'm wanting to know about your yard, where these parking spaces would be, because we wouldn't want. Crushed stone and I, I don't know how easily that gets washed away. To get washed downstream. That's just a thought. I just, that area, uh, has been, uh. You know, it's often closed, the Cove Avenue going around that property. Well, it's not actually that property, but you know Cove Avenue going towards Main Street.
Yes.
It's often closed when there's been a big rain. But maybe that, I I don't even know how to take that into consideration, but.
That's something Shannon can look at or consider when he makes his recommendation. I mean, Shannon, do you know, can you assess that? Do you know how to assess that?
If I don't, I know someone that can.
Not, if if we have to macadam it, it's not that big of a deal. I was just trying to save a little money is all I was trying to do.
Sure.
Hey Kathy, when I, when we, when I get the plans for me, I'll, I'll, uh, I I have. You know, way of taking a look and I'll, I'll see if I can figure out any of the storm wire there and if it's an issue, then maybe that is where you go.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Kathy or Shannon or anyone?
No.
All right, thank you Kathy. I will, we'll, we'll hear from you probably in October.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So. I have no correspondence except the zoning officer's report and since we have him with us. Let, we would die.
They can go through the whole thing, are you Lucy?
Yeah, not going to make you sit and sit and listen to it either.
Just a couple of updates to it if, uh, if I can. Um, was the, obviously, the gentleman that came in earlier tonight. Um, was not listed on there. The, uh. Uh, you know, from ninety-eight Broad Street, they are moving again. Uh, I don't know if you knew, you know, the back and forth that's been going on with the shaws down there. Um, they were. Uh, back in India, uh, at the beginning, at the end of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, they came back in just right before COVID, so they were lucky enough to come back and not be able to do anything. And then once they started to do things, um, one of them, uh, the gentleman, you know, was hospitalized for a while. Um, he's okay now, wasn't for COVID, um, and he, they are back to work. Um, plumbing issues, uh, seem to be happening, new HVAC HVAC units are are underway. Uh, so hopefully it's it's back to moving forward again. Um, and they, uh, each time I talk to them, they're excited, but, um, seems to be a very slow process, so, but with. The way twenty twenty's going, everything seems to be that way. Um, the, I was informed from Fred that, uh. The San Jose Cafe, um, looks like that, uh, Jeff Bowder may be picking up that. Property and, you know, he's looking at using it as a coffee shop or small restaurant or even perhaps attaining or nail salon, but. Um, it looks like, you know, it may be moving away from, you know, the current San Jose Cafe and. It would be, just be good to see it moving on and getting into something instead of sitting empty. That's the updates to the report that are sitting there. If anybody has questions on the, uh, report. Uh, be more than happy to go over it with you guys. And I apologize that you hadn't been getting any of these, um, you know, I've been sending out a. The zoning list every month and I didn't know you weren't getting them. Uh, and I really do apologize and anytime that, you know, Lucy or any of you need to reach out to me, feel free and I'm I'm here for you, so.
Shannon, I have a question on twenty-five to thirty-one East Main. They're looking for, to seek a temporary use and occupancy approval for two of the four units. One of the units is already occupied.
Mm-hmm, and that's, it, I I can tell you it passed occupancy. Um, I did a stop work order on them back in February because of them not getting the permits they were supposed to get. Um, we got them up and running and permitted, uh. Finally, towards the end of April. Um, it took a while to get Leah through the entire process, uh, for the permitting the building. Um, and it was already, you, we weren't going to evict anybody during all of this or or have her do that. But we wanted her to go through the right process to get, uh, use and occupancy so that she was able to have them actually there legally. Um, so the two that she was seeking did get approved last week. Um, the other two are still in the process of being remodeled.
Which two are, were approved, twenty-five and?
Believe it was twenty-three and, or twenty-five and twenty-seven.
The two not on the corner, the two closest to the.
The two furthest west, yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
And is twenty-seven occupied yet or just got its approval, so?
Just got its approval. I told her she had to go down to, uh, the borough office. She still needs to get a rental license. So we're still pushing her through all this. She has not gotten a rental license and she go, and she keeps asking me to go do my inspection. And I keep telling her, I'm not doing those till next year and when when we're through the, um, new ordinance for the regulated rental. Um, I said, but you will be getting them, um, but right now, let's get you licensed and get you through the process. It's just been a, almost a handheld for every, every step of the way.
Well, thank you for holding your hand.
Well, that's what we're here for.
Now, quit playing nice. What you want and expect it.
Well, that's true too.
Yeah. The Bulldog Academy, uh, just put in for, you know, they're, they got their approval and opened up on Tuesday. Um, for one West Big Spring. They just put in their permit for seven West Big Spring, so. We're now working that one through the process.
Is that a different, are, is that a different building? Is that?
Yes, that's the church. Next door.
So there, the Bulldog prep is the whole bottom floor of the thing?
Yes.
The front to the back, the whole thing?
I believe, yes, it it's, um, not the, I don't believe the. Western side of it, I think that's the hallway that goes all the way through for the access to the loft apartments. Um, but the the front side, you know, the, uh, high street side, front to back is, yes.
And then they're, they're expanding into the, the, uh, what, the building that was the church and taken over the first floor?
Yes. Yeah, I just got those designs in, uh, literally yesterday and all they're doing for renovations there is a small ba, is a restroom. So, um, but again, they still need to go through the process and get up and running.
Okay.
I'm okay, go ahead.
Over, Shannon, tell me what's going on on one oh seven Big Spring Avenue?
One oh seven Big Spring Avenue.
Or one oh nine? Is that us that shut it down occupant? I I mean, it's got a sticker on it. Does anyone know what's going on there?
Where is that? I mean, I know it's on Big Spring Avenue.
It's right across the house from Scott Penner's.
Across the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I. I did not shut down one oh nine.
I don't know what number it is, but like I said, it's it's right across the house, the street from Scott's house.
Yeah, one oh three jumper, I mean, I, you know, are you talking about a tag that was on there today?
I thought it was. Okay, is that what it is, one oh three?
Well, I'm not sure. I'm that, there's one oh three is, uh. I don't know which, which, I don't know which house is Scott's, so I don't want to say it's.
One oh one is the one that's across from me. Um, that's a residential. I'm not sure anything's going on there.
No, it's.
One oh one's fine. One oh three was tagged today for, you know, um, a door hanger was put on there today for. Some tall weeds in the front there. Yeah, I I don't like to get on people for other stuff. Uh, you know, they can address it, but I don't know of anything that was shut down like it was posted.
Okay, okay, I just got a call and someone shut it down and that person was wrong, sorry.
No, and I, and I could be wrong. I mean, there may be something else going on, but I don't, because one oh seven is next to that. And one oh nine is in front, is right next to the church, uh. And I don't know of anything at either of those that would have been posted by me. Um, I.
Okay, thank you Shannon.
We got a door tag. Now, there is, uh. The old coffee house back there, I've been working with, uh, Matt Zane, you know, the Highlands back there to. He's not, he's not happy about the tagging back there, but that's a different subject, so.
Well, they, they tend to not, they don't tend to keep the weeds down back there.
Um, but yeah, that's, that's the best I can tell you on one oh three to one oh nine area, so.
Thank you.
Anything else out of my report that you guys had questions on?
Um, I'm looking over the, uh, the part.
Did you see, uh, your brother's pizzas? Did you see uh, your brother's pizza was just putting on a walking cooler in the back there? I did have a uh, uh, call today and it looks like someone may be moving to the empty lot on Shepherd. Um, and want to build over on Shepherd. Uh, the one that's uh twenty-four Shepherd. That's point five nine acres. It's uh off Little League Avenue. It's an empty lot next to after the mobile homes. Trying to think. It's across from, it's almost directly across from Sir William Drive. It's, it's one of the last properties, you know, in our, in the borough before you go, if you go across the street, you're out of the borough.
They're gonna be building?
They wanna build a single family dwelling. Haven't applied or anything yet. It's just, I got the initial contact today about it.
Is that twenty-four Shepherd Road?
Yes, yes.
That's uh, at point five nine acres. It's exempt. It's owned by the American Legion. So do you think they're buying it from the?
Yes, yeah. It's been for sale for a little while now.
Okay.
Yeah. But I wanted to give you guys the update. I literally got a request on it today and that, you know, for applications and setbacks and stuff. And I said, well, I'll get back to you. But uh, I, you know, from what they're looking at, you know, looks like it'll be a nice little place for them, so.
Yeah, it's a good spot. Anybody have any other? Anything else for Shannon? Nope. All right, Michael, you're good? All right. Well, unless you guys wanna just hang out for a while, you know, have a cup of coffee, have a beer, whatever. Um, oh, this is live in public. I shouldn't have said that. We will, do I have a motion uh to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
If you wanna hang out.
Okay, sure. Thank you. So hang out, okay. All right. Hey, thank you all very much, Troy, Kirk.
My pleasure.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Troy, whenever you get a chance, if you don't, if you have my contact information, just get ahold of me so we can get that zoning stuff.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think hopefully here, once I work through the task force and Shannon will be in good shape to sit down, you can kinda see the clean version, if you will. Um, and get a set of eyes on it.
Thank you. Guys, have a great night.
And Matthew, uh, Michael, Kirk, Jack, Troy, we'll all be seeing each other at five thirty tomorrow?
PM.
PM.
Yes, clarify that.
I can make it AM if you want, but I'm sure you don't wanna wake Jack up that early. All right. We'll see everybody. Thanks.